Good evening, folks, and welcome to tonight's city council meeting and committee of the whole meeting. The city council meeting is called to order. We kindly ask our city clerk to take the roll call.
Bruno.
Here.
Burkhart.
Here.
Clemens.
Here.
Ruby.
Here.
Cavan.
Here.
Kilburg.
Here.
Maladra.
Here.
Marx.
Here.
McGowan.
Here.
Swanson.
Here.
We have a full house tonight, ladies and gentlemen. Most of you heard the exchange between our wee blows and wolves earlier from PAC 111. Longest 12 minutes of my life. Gentlemen, are you going to do us the honor of leading us in the pledge? We will follow your lead, okay? So whenever you're assembled and ready to go.
We can do this. Shh. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gentlemen, that was perfect.
We do it every day.
Now, if you have homework, or perhaps find yourselves bored, feel free to leave any time you'd like. We know you have busy lives. We're delighted that you're with us tonight, but if you want to stick around, you're more than welcome to, okay? Sound good? Okay, here we go, guys. City council meeting. We're off and running. Item three, folks. Any new business or public comment from anyone joining us this evening who wishes to address any item on the agenda or any item in general before the council? Seeing none? We move on to item number four, public hearings. Special items and presentations. Item 4A is a public hearing on the fiscal year 2020-2021, City of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. Will entertain a motion to open the public hearing on these matters. Motion by Alderman Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clemens. All in favor of opening the public hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
The public hearing is opened. Anyone from the dais, any questions or comments regarding the matters before us or anyone in the audience? Nothing, sir? Is there a motion to close the public hearing? Motion by Alderman Kilburg. Seconded by Alderman Marx. All in favor of closing the public hearing? Please say aye.
Aye.
Item 4B is introduction and presentation of Dr. Kimberly Lemke in recognition of her receiving the 2020 enterprising women of the year award. Dr. Lemke, please join us at the podium. Now, here's how I'm going to introduce you formally. Dr. Lemke and I have known each other for a while, and I had learned through multiple sources, and Dr. Lemke confirmed, and I want to get this right.
Yes.
Check this out, ladies and gentlemen. Enterprising Women Magazine announces 2020 enterprising women of the year award winners. Raleigh, North Carolina, earlier this year, has announced the winners of the 2020 enterprising women of the year awards, an annual tribute to the world's top women entrepreneurs. Honorees will be recognized at the 18th Annual Enterprising Women of the Year Awards banquet in beautiful Clearwater Beach, Florida. The enterprising women of the year award is widely considered one of the most prestigious recognition programs for women business owners. To win, nominees must demonstrate that they have a fast-growth business, they mentor or actively support other women and girls involved in entrepreneurship, and stand out as leaders in their community. So we have with us Dr. Lemke, who calls Geneva home.
Yes.
Who is recognized for extraordinary achievements in all the areas touched on. And you and I visited, what, about three weeks or so ago?
Yep.
And I said, "Let's get you to City Hall and celebrate your extraordinary achievements." So, welcome.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. So tell us a little bit about what you do. I know what you do, but everyone else tuning in would love to know.
So I'm a licensed clinical psychologist, and I have a practice in Naperville. So I see little people up through adults. I do consulting for postpartum groups. I wrote a children's book, so I also go and read that. I was a therapeutic day school manager for a while as well. We're now up to four clinicians at our practice, specialize in anxiety, OCD, depression, all those sort of things, and do parenting trainings. I learned through my two little ones over there, my little nine-year-old, the fun and joy that is parenting. So I go out and talk to people and sort of normalize that for them, and I just love what I do every day.
Now, mom and dad are with you as well.
We have grandma and grandpa.
Oh, man.
My dear friends, and her son, and my kids. It's a family affair, people.
Ben and Maggie are twin nine-year-olds.
Yes.
And Maggie apparently is one minute older than Ben.
Yes. She reminds him that she was blocking the way so he couldn't get out. So whenever she says I'm one minute, she's like, he goes, "Well, I can't get out until you got out." Which is true. Which is true. So they are my blessings.
So obviously, you do extraordinary work.
Thank you.
And you work with, as you indicated, young people?
Yep.
Or... I want to phrase this delicately, but has your practice has grown because, A, of the need, and because it's also just a more difficult time in general to raise children? Or is it...
Yeah, so part of it's grown is, which it's a blessing that a lot of people in the community have gotten to know us and the work we do. I also have a sleep specialty as well, so I've been trained on cognitive behavioral therapy for insomnia, and that is a big issue, is helping people sleep. So that has also sort of grown the practice as well, and a lot with electronics and with sort of setting limits and those sort of things. And a lot of anxiety in little people, just overscheduling and helping them sort of, you know, talk through their issues, use their words, and helping parents parent that is getting challenging. So I help them sort of figure out the best way to do it, and then we talk to the little people and sort of creatively help them through play, also figure out how to express what they feel and communicate that. Blessed to work with a great staff who get kids and work effectively with them, and, you know, their symptoms relieve and we see smiles and all that stuff, so it's good. It's rewarding work.
And the work you do crosses every socioeconomic boundary that we all know of.
Absolutely. Yeah. And again, little through, we do couples therapy, but we see littles up through bigs, and anxiety is just growing rampant. And it's affecting our sleep, it's affecting how we parent, it's affecting so many things. So again, there's just, from every age, I mean, you see it in every age group.
Right.
And just little people don't have the words to explain it, so we sort of help them find that.
I'd like to ask you one more question, then I'll open it up to the council as well.
Sure.
But you touched on something earlier in your statement regarding electronics.
Yes.
Is it your professional opinion that while there's a lot of stuff out there that's addictive, perhaps the most addictive is that which we provide our kids or grandkids called the smartphone?
Yes. Well, it's mobile, and so you can take it anywhere. So my kids are probably behind me cursing me out as I say this.
Well, actually, they left.
They're like, "No, electronics. We were just at Lobster before this." And I said, "No, we don't do electronics at dinner." And so it's just, it's always there, and so you always, you never have to be bored now.
Right.
And you never have to sort of self-soothe or self-entertain. So it becomes sort of a constant source of entertainment. And so it's addicting, because then if you're bored, it fixes that. If you're sad, it fixes that. If you're angry, it can fix that. So it's just, it's quick, it's accessible, and it's fun, and it's absolutely addicting. But then they don't learn how to do it themselves. So a part of it is, it's a great tool to use every now and then, but it can't be the main tool, especially for little ones and for adults. You know, we have to figure out how to self-soothe when we're angry, scared, calm, any feeling you have. You've got to learn how to tolerate it. So yes, most addicting.
Absolutely. Questions or comments from the council for Dr. Lemke? Yes, Alderman Burkhart.
Thanks for being here tonight, and congratulations.
Thank you.
What drew you into your career? Was that, was psychology something that you were drawn to as a teenager? Or, you know, how did you find your way to this path?
Yeah, my mom tells a story about how, when I was little, apparently, I don't remember this, I had a couch, like a little kid, like a Barbie couch, and I used to stand there and I used to like ask the Barbies how they felt. I have no idea. My mom was like three years...
She was four.
Four years old. So I didn't know that actually this was a profession until I got older. And then I went into high school and took my first psychology class, and I just, I loved it, and it just came natural. And then I went into college and I went pre-med psychology, and I didn't know if I wanted to go the MD route or the PhD sci-fi route. And so as I was looking at sort of trajectories and what I wanted to do, I was more bent towards sitting with and helping, and that was more the route I wanted to go, was to help people that way as opposed to the MD route. So last minute, it was just a sort of, all right, we're gonna, we're gonna go this, and went into grad school, and just opportunities opened, and I feel like my path has taken different routes, but it's always been in that sort of field. And so it's, yeah, apparently since I was little, I had a little Barbie couch.
How are the Barbies doing, as gentlemen?
They're fabulous. They haven't changed a bit.
My other question was, I guess part of this award is mentoring other women and working with young girls. Can you talk about how you do that?
Yeah, so at my practice, we do sort of consultation as well, and so we meet regularly, weekly with the female staff as well, and talk about sort of clinically how everybody's doing. We just had a clinician have a baby, and so a part of that is helping sort of self-care and helping women have self-care professionally as well, so that they can keep doing then what they're doing. And so I work with them. I also work with a lot of postpartum women in groups, and sort of help them refocus back on themselves and taking care of themselves, and also sort of finding an identity for themselves. So a lot of times, postpartum-ish, kids come along and they're a blessing, and everything goes into them, and then it becomes hard for them to navigate, well, now who am I or who do I want to be? So sort of helping them also start hearing their voice, find their voice, use their voice. Also do a lot of volunteering at the kids' school. I also work for the disaster action team for the Red Cross, so go out and help people struggling there too. First responders, I go out there too and help their spouses and those sort of things. So...
You're a busy woman. We are lucky to have you in the community.
Well, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the dais? Alderman Clemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Congratulations.
Thank you.
It's fantastic. I just, I wanted to pick up on something the mayor had asked about. He had brought phones, devices, you know, I have a seven-year-old at home, and it's something that we wrestle with constantly.
Yes.
And along those lines with the devices, I'm wondering if you've seen in your field a huge negative effect from social media. You know, I used to be on Facebook, I finally got off of it because I found it to be a very toxic environment.
Smart, yeah.
And I found very little upside. Forget all the politics, just in general, I found it to be very toxic.
Yes.
And I'm just wondering if the uptick in anxiety and people seeking help for that could be, or is, do you find that it's tied in any way to social media?
Oh, my gosh. And actually, yes.
Go.
And, yeah, right? Do you have 30 hours on this topic? Because part of it is, before, right before social media, you could kind of guess what, you know, Sally was doing in her house, you know, but you never quite knew, and now, you know, it's sort of the highlight reel of people's lives. And so what people do is they compare their normal life to the highlight reel. So, you know, and I'm guilty, I might be, not that they would ever do anything wrong, but let's say we're arguing, and it's like, "Take a picture," you know, and like two seconds before that, we were just on timeout, you know? And so people then look at that and think, for everybody, like, "What am I doing wrong?" Or, you know, "They've got it together and I don't." And so then it affects their self-esteem, it affects how they parent. Countless times for sleep, I'll have clients come in, I have them do like a, I call an experiment where they sort of, if they're having trouble falling asleep at night, they'll sort of experiment, like, "What are the things that you're doing before bed?" And so inevitably, multiple times a week, I'll have clients come in, and they'll say, "The phone didn't stress me out. You know, it was, I could be on social media." And so I'll say, "Okay, great. Fabulous. Like, well, so tell me some of the things you saw on social media." And they'll be like, "It wasn't stressful, Dr. Lemke, it was good." It's like, "Perfect, just tell, I want to just know all about it." And they're like, "Well, you know, my cousin got married," and really, "Awesome." And I saw my aunt sitting in the audience. I mean, she didn't come to my kid's wedding, but she came to, you know, that wedding, you know, and so I'm just sitting there listening, and, but I, it didn't affect me. I mean, she couldn't even send a card for my daughter, you know, like, so, so on and so forth. So it's sort of like this, so many things affect us, and sometimes we don't even know, and then it shows up symptomatically in sleep or anxiety. And it's just huge, it just is constant comparisons.
Yeah.
People who get off of it actually say it's like a relief.
I found it to be, so it's like a weight has been lifted off.
Yes.
You spend so much of your time and your productivity just goes down the drain because you're constantly checking it, feeling like you need to be updating people on things that frankly, they don't care about, and...
Absolutely, absolutely.
So I'll be curious to see as we evolve how this keeps changing, but I was, thank you for your insight on that.
Absolutely, yeah, no, you're, stay off. Stay far away.
It's funny, Alderman, your son just texted me saying, "Dad."
I'm sure he did, yeah.
So you're at the awards next month?
Yes, yes.
You get to receive the award, you get to say a few words?
I do.
Obviously prestigious, as the press release indicated. What's the message you hope to convey to all those who are in the audience waiting for you to say something, full of wisdom?
No pressure. I think the biggest thing is just keep moving, right? So the idea for me is, sometimes we try to figure out what's the big picture, and I feel like people get lost in that. So, you know, I feel like when you're trying to do something, whatever it is, whether it's a career, or it's family, or whatever it is, it's that we should know what we're doing. And a lot of times, it's just do the right next, the best next thing. And so, you know, it's the idea of, if you're in a career and you're doing what you want to be doing, then just keep moving. And I feel like a lot of people get paralyzed in terms of, like, "How do I do it best?" Or the comparisons versus just, you do, you stay in your lane and just sort of go with it, and again, not have to look at the big picture and just keep moving, because if you keep moving, you will get somewhere. And if you shift, sometimes if you just shift a little bit, it takes you in another direction that you didn't even know was possible. And so we get lost in that, and we just stop moving and get paralyzed in fear, and so the main thing is just keep moving. Keep stepping, because you'll end up somewhere.
Very good. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for sharing all this with us.
Thanks for having me here. I appreciate it, everybody. Thank you.
Ben and Maggie, well done.
Yes. Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Item 4C, folks, consider mayor's appointment of Meghan Ellsberg to the Planning and Zoning Commission. So moved. Motion by Alderman Bruno, seconded by Alderman Swanson, and Ms. Ellsberg's with us tonight. Do you want to come say hi at the podium? Come on up.
I don't know what else to say.
And you just got back from a trip.
Hi. I did. I got back from Mexico, visiting my in-laws down there.
Could have called in, for God's sake, we would have, I mean, you didn't have to come back.
Oh, no, no, I didn't. But, yes, thank you, that's where I was. Now I'm back.
The council has a copy of the application you submitted.
Great.
You and I had an opportunity to speak.
Yes.
As you know, the chairman, of course, fully endorsed your appointment and nomination.
Yes, thank you.
And would you mind just sharing with us, because you shared with me, I thought, very eloquently, your admiration for the community in general, and why you chose Geneva originally, and why you wanted to be involved. Would you be so kind as to share that perhaps?
Absolutely. My family and I moved here, it'll be two years, in June. My son is on the autism spectrum, and we moved here because he attends NovaCare in St. Charles. Well, that's why we started coming this way. And then we got to know the Geneva Early Learning Program. That is a plug, official plug for Geneva Early Learning Program.
That's awesome. Well done.
And he's been there for two years. He goes to kindergarten next year. So that's what brought us over this way. But then, of course, Third Street speaks for itself. We joined Eagle Brook, and it was just so easy to meet people, it's so welcoming, I love the history. Everybody is so passionate about the town, and it's just a real community feel that I haven't experienced anywhere else. We've been open, or we've been welcome with open arms, and I'm a stay-at-home mom, I have a lot of friends that are involved in the community, and I asked how I could get involved and give back to this community that's quickly given back to me and my family.
Fantastic.
That, I wasn't expecting to say anything, so...
That was good, that was perfect, yeah. It was awesome. We're delighted you're here. We have a motion by Alderman Bruno, we have a second by Alderman Swanson, all in favor of appointing Mrs. Ellsberg to the Planning and Zoning Commission. Please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you.
There's a gentleman in the back row. Mrs. Ellsberg, see the gentleman next to the fire chief? That's David DeGroot. He will be reaching out to you shortly, and you will be...
We just haven't connected.
Oh, life is good, so...
He gets credit for that.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.
Item 4D, ladies and gentlemen, consider mayor's appointment to the Fire and Police Commission. All of you received two emails from me, because I pressed the send button twice. The gentleman's name is Ernie Belmonte. He lives on Seventh Street. Oh, he is here, I thought you couldn't make it tonight.
The concert is next Tuesday.
Oh, well, come on up to the, Ernie says to me, "I can't make it." My son, right?
Son.
Is at a concert. I said, "Oh, God, by all means, go to the concert," so, and his son plays for Nirvana, which is amazing.
Yeah, right, that's it.
Mr. Belmonte, welcome.
Thank you.
And thank you for accepting the invitation to be nominated.
I appreciate it.
We appreciate it. The council has a copy of your materials.
Great.
You have an illustrious career, human resources, all sorts of...
Sure, that's one way to say it.
Cool stuff. So we're delighted. Anything special you'd like to say this evening?
No, just glad to be here and looking forward for an opportunity to give back to the community.
Police chief and fire chief are behind you, and they both gave me the thumbs up, so that's good.
That's a good thing.
And you're going to be hitting the ground running as well.
Looking forward to it.
Pardon? Yeah. My apologies for Alderman Clemens, he's still upset with his son having the cell phone, so... Is there a motion to appoint Mr. Belmonte to the Fire and Police Commission? So moved. Alderman Bruno, Alderman McGowan with the second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Item five, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item six is the omnibus agenda. All items marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine and can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion? Alderman Swanson makes the motion.
Second.
Alderman, was that, Alderman Marx makes the second. Mr. Clerk, whenever you're available, please take the role.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item number 11, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $3,728,239.51. Here I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the website and in your respective council packets. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
The omnibus agenda passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item number 11, municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Total bills are $3,728,239.51. Here I move that we approve and pay the bills as read. The individual items that add up to that amount can be found in tonight's city council packet on the website.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are also available on the website and in your respective council packets. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Ruby. Any questions or comments regarding the bills? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Cavan.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhart.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Motion passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. Item 13B is to consider approval of resolution number 2020-12, adopting the fiscal year 2020-2021, City of Geneva and TRICOM Central Dispatch budgets. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx.
Second.
The authorized representatives and maintenance managers can be one and the same, and the designating officers then can delegate to the authorizing representatives. I do have Hal Wright, Superintendent of Electrical Services, with us this evening if you want more specifics, but essentially we're required to fill out the form and designate these folks, regardless if we've done it before or never done it before. We have to do it again now, so there you have it.
Questions or comments regarding the agreement or for City Administrator Dawkins or perhaps Superintendent Wright? Hearing none? Seeing none? Mr. Clerk, please take the role.
Caven.
Aye.
Kilburg.
Aye.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marx.
Aye.
McGowan.
Aye.
Swanson.
Aye.
Bruno.
Aye.
Burkhardt.
Aye.
Clemens.
Aye.
Ruby.
Aye.
Item 13B passes with 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero absent. We are at the bewitching hour. I will happily entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Marx. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned the council meeting. We will commence the committee of the whole meeting. After a couple-minute break, we'll be back in 20 minutes. Ladies and gentlemen, it's my pleasure to call the committee of the whole meeting to order. Please let the record show that all the council members are present this evening. Anyone in the audience wishing to comment on anything on the agenda or anything in general under new business and public comment, now is your time to do so. Item three, folks, approve regular committee of the whole minutes from February 3, 2020, and special committee of the whole minutes from February 10, 2020. Is there a motion? Motion by Swanson. Seconded by Caven. All in favor of item three, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Under items of business, 4A is to consider draft ordinance amending Title VI Police Regulations, Chapter II, Miscellaneous Offenses, Section 12, Possession of Marijuana, and Section 13, Possession of Drug Periphenelia of the Geneva City Code. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno. Seconded by Alderman Clemens. Ms. Dawkins with the preamble.
Sure. So as you're all aware, effective January 1, 2020, the adult use of recreational cannabis became lawful in the state of Illinois. While the adult use of recreational cannabis is lawful, state statute does identify some restrictions governing the possession and usage. The proposed amendment to the ordinance mirrors those changes that were made to the state statute and enables the city police officers to handle these cases under the authority of the local ordinance as opposed to the state statute. I do have Chief Passarelli with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator and/or Chief Passarelli.
Hi, Chief.
Hi.
Refresh my memory, what is the fine for possession of beer in Geneva?
$300.
Okay, so this is consistent, then, with a beer possession violation?
That is correct.
Okay, great. I just wanted clarity on that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else from the dais? We have a motion on 4A. We have a second on 4A. A voice vote is sufficient. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? 4A passes unanimously. 4B is to consider draft resolution authorizing the city administrator to purchase 24 sets of structural firefighting turnout gear for the fire department from WS Darley at an estimated cost of $47,000. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman McGowan. The council asked some questions about this. Those questions were responded to and are available on the website, but now we will present some additional information from Ms. Dawkins.
Sure. So again, the request is for 24 new sets of turnout gear. The National Fire Protection Standards state that gear should be retired 10 years after the date of manufacture. The standard covers helmets, gloves, coats, pants, hoods, and boots. Some of the good, depending upon use and wear, might have to be retired before that 10-year, and the lowest qualified quotes were from WS Darley. So, and this is an annual expense, which is what you saw in the question, so they actually... We try to have every firefighter have two sets of gear so that they're... They can be washed, they can be worn, and they're cleaned as soon as there's a fire to help prevent against any workplace hazards. I'm sorry. I have Chief Antonori with us this evening if there are additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator and/or Chief Antonori? Item 4B? Seeing none? Hearing none? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4B passes unanimously. Item 4C is to consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Benchmark Construction at a cost of $110,825, with the allowance of the city administrator to approve up to $11,082.50 in change orders for a total not-to-exceed amount of $121,907.50 for sanitary sewer lining project. Is there a motion? Alderman Marx makes the motion. Alderman Burkhardt makes the second. Ms. Dawkins.
So the fiscal year 20 capital budget has funds allocated for sanitary sewer rehabilitation. The project was advertised and four bids were received. The low bid was submitted by Benchmark Construction. Staff is recommending, again, that there's a 10% contingency included in the overall not-to-exceed amount for any heavy cleaning required or any unforeseen field changes that are needed. Again, there were some questions earlier today, and one of them had to do with, in the past, we've done this like as a joint bid with our neighboring communities. That didn't happen this time, but we will let you know that the price that we got back was actually lower than what we had on our last contract. So still a favorable contract, and Superintendent Van Gescam is with us this evening if you have any additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator and/or for Mr. Van Gescam, our superintendent? Alderman Burkhardt?
Why did the... Why did... I might have missed this explanation. Why did the joint contract not work out this time? Is it timing or...
A combination of timing and then also just shifted priorities between the, you know, three communities. All of us kind of got a late jump on it this year because we had to shift some priorities. If you remember, we had some emergency repairs that we had to contract out, and so that took priority over getting this lining project out to bid for us, and we didn't know how much money was going to be remaining, and so it ended up being a little bit later than we thought, and kind of similar things happened with Batavia and St. Charles also.
Doesn't mean we can't... Next time around, we might be able to work with them.
Oh, no. No, in fact, we're looking for... We're looking, you know... We're in talks now with a bid coming up here probably sometime this summer.
Very good.
So we're talking to them.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? Alderman Bruno?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Van Gescam. Just if you could remind me and the public, where are we roughly with the entirety of relining those...
Sure. It... Every year, you know, we do a little bit more, as you know, but we're still roughly about 15% of the city has been relined. So, you know, that... But that includes the PVC that's newer, so, you know, we might be a little bit better than 15%, but that includes all the sewers in town, so...
So at 15%, we're probably not yet seeing major objective measures as to the improvement. I mean, we know it improves things, but...
Sure. We are seeing improvements in some areas just because we know that these areas are susceptible to infiltration, so the bad areas are the ones that we're concentrating on, so we are seeing reductions.
Great. Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais? We have a motion by Marx, a second by Burkhardt. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4C passes unanimously. Item 4D is consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a contract with Frank Marshall Electric, extraordinary producer, at a cost of $28,700, with the allowance of the city administrator to approve up to $2,870 in change orders for a total not-to-exceed amount of $31,570 for water plant variable frequency drive installation for reverse osmosis unit number one. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Burkhardt, seconded by Bruno. Ms. Dawkins, good luck.
Thank you. So following the failure of the variable frequency drive for the water treatment plant, the city council approved the purchase of a new VFD. The new VFD is physically larger in size, which require increasing the size of the concrete pad the unit sits on and installing new electric conduit and wiring. The project was advertised and two bids were received with the low bid provided by Frank Marshall Electric. Staff is recommending, again, that a 10% contingency be included, and then also today you saw in the questions, we did provide a photo of the unit, so if you're curious or want to know what we're talking about, there is a photo out there posted on the website. And again, Superintendent Van Gescam is here to answer any additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator or for Mr. Van Gescam regarding the VFD? Hearing... What? Hearing... Stop laughing, Clerk. Hearing none? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? The motion passes unanimously. Item 4E, consider draft resolution authorizing the execution of a market license agreement between the City of Geneva and Benidoun, USA for the 2020 and 2021 market seasons.
So moved.
Motion by Alderman Bruno.
Second.
Seconded by Alderman Clemens. Ms. Dawkins.
Okay, so for the past few years, the city has executed one-year license agreements with Benidoun, USA to operate the French market. The request this evening is for a two-year term to provide Benidoun an opportunity to secure consistent vendors. License provisions include an annual license fee of $500, with Benidoun responsible for the setup and teardown, utility costs, and cost to update parking signs. In addition, prior to the start of the 2020 market, they will replace the onsite light pole banners. The proposed market license does not include an increase in the annual license fee. We did survey other communities, and what we found, there was quite a range of annual fees, but we are a smaller market, and we do not provide setup and teardown assistance, off-site storage, restroom facilities, or free utilities, so we felt that the fee charged is reasonable and did not recommend an increase. Director Timoshenko is here this evening if you have any additional questions.
Questions for the city administrator or for our Economic Development Director? And my apologies for... To Benidoun, I mispronounced it when I read the item. Alderman Burkhardt?
I see in here it says nothing in this agreement should show that, like, we're allowing for the market pavilion to be developed, so this is obviously independent of that. We've been hearing about that for a long time.
Correct. And we're still in talks about that and looking at other pavilions and maybe looking at doing a joint one, so that's still... That's still in discussions, but it is separate from this agreement.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion by Bruno, a second by Clemens. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4E passes unanimously. Item 4F is to recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of a farm lease with pit stick farms for a farm lease at a rate of $261 per tillable acre for the 2020 and 2021 crop season. Is there a motion? Motion by Marx.
Second.
Seconded by Clemens. Ms. Dawkins?
Okay, so Pistic Farms from Maple Park, Illinois, has leased land at Prairie Green Preserve for farming purposes since 2004. Under Illinois law, the city can enter into two-year leases. The lease proposals for farming 245 acres for the 2020 and 2021 crop seasons were solicited. We received one proposal, and that was from Pistic Farms. The bid for the 2020 and the 2021 seasons is a cash rent lease rate of $261 per tillable acre for both seasons. You'll note that in Section 1, the rental provisions of the farm lease was revised to clarify that the final installment may be adjusted to account for actual acres planted by the leasee. The previous draft stated that the final installment could be adjusted to account for the actual acres harvested. We do have Director DeGroot with us this evening if you have any additional questions. And again, there were several questions that were asked and posted to the website this afternoon.
Questions for the city administrator or the director of community development? Alderman Kilburg?
I had a few questions.
For Mr.?
Whoever wants to answer them. I guess, since we're dealing with a commodity here, what is the benefit of a two-year lease versus a one-year lease? If we had a drought this summer and all of a sudden corn prices would go from $350 a bushel to $8 a bushel as it did about five or six years ago, our rental property would be worth a lot more to farmers in the area than it would be, for instance, this year. So what is the benefit to the city of Geneva to enter into a two-year lease when a commodity's
Guess I don't... Not sure how to answer that. I mean, we're allowed to enter into a two-year lease as a maximum. That's what we've historically done.
Well, historically, maybe that's not the right approach. I'm just saying, I think what we're doing is, is we're locking ourselves into something that ultimately could generate a lot less revenue for the city. And, you know, and I've got some other ideas as it relates to the 245 acres as well, but I guess that was my first question. What is the benefit of a two-year lease? And I really don't see a benefit to a two-year lease. I think a one-year lease would be to the city's benefit. Obviously, a two-year lease would be to the farmer's benefit, to pit sticks' benefit. If you look at it, our lease has gone from $375 an acre to $261 an acre, and commodities and the fact that commodities have fallen and that that's impacting it to some extent. But the other factor is that we've only got one person that's bidding, and when you don't have any competition, guess what? The numbers are going to continue to fall. I guess my other questions would be, as it relates to land and water resources, again, are those... Is that the party that is doing the management of Prairie Green for us?
The wetland mitigation bank? Yes.
Right. Okay. I guess my question is, was the water release as related to last spring and our heavy rains, did that have any bearing on the fact that we had flooding of our farmland and that because of their management of the release of those waters created flooding and the fact that those acres were no longer tillable in 2019? Was that a discussion that we had with Land and Water Resources, who made the assessment that...
I'm actually going to ask Director Babica to come up and address that question.
Okay, sure. The only reason I say that is, is that they're the ones that came here a couple of years ago, and they told us they knew how to manage Prairie Green. And I'm just wondering, you know, water runs downhill, and if the water doesn't get away, it's going to back up into those fields, and I'm just wondering, tell me that that wasn't the case.
Well, the structures that regulate the water levels within the wetlands bank are set at a preset engineered height. They're not actively manipulated like sluice gates, so there are predetermined elevations to maintain a certain amount of water within the wetlands bank. The excess flow that's not required for that is then discharged through a series of drain tiles, so you've got drain tiles bringing flow into the wetland bank, and then you've got a series of drain tiles taking the excess flow out of the wetlands bank.
But those aren't the... Those aren't the drain tiles that are in question as it relates to the farmland?
Yes, they're all interconnected, because the farmland has drain tiles that is bringing water to the wetland bank. And it's concentrated to feed that facility, and then the excess flow is then drained away to Brewster Creek to the south. What we found over the last nine months of review on the drain tiles is that several areas of the discharge lines that's taking the excess flow from the wetlands bank to the south have become compromised, and that's what we've been working on with Tom Huddleston and Huddleston McBride drainage specialists to come up with a maintenance plan. And actually, this Friday, we're meeting with the pit sticks to kind of verify the model that the Huddleston McBride's put together, so now we can develop a maintenance plan and bring that forward in front of the city council in the near future to get repairs done this spring.
So you're saying, then, that the drain tile is really in Prairie Green and not on the farmland, per se? The problem tiles?
Well, Prairie Green is the entire facility.
Understood.
There's the wetland bank inside Prairie Green.
Where is the repairs going to need to take place? Is it going to need to take place in Prairie Green or is it going to need to take place in the farmland? Because I think that's important, because my other question was, is heavy equipment and the fact that they've been farming it, you said, since 2004, and the size of the tractors and the equipment could be a contributing factor to the fact that we've had tile failures on the farmland.
What you need to do is... We need to be speaking the same language.
Well, I mean, that's not clarified in here, so that's why I'm asking the question.
Because the drain tile repairs are not related to the lease whatsoever. There is the wetland bank.
Well, it's related to the lease if we can't get a return for those leased acres, so...
I understand it, Alderman Kilburg, and I'm trying to answer your question. The wetland bank is a segment within the Prairie Green natural area. So the Prairie Green natural area is what encompasses all the 800 acres that the city has owned or acquired over the years. The wetland bank is basically the center part or the low point of that facility. The drain tiles that feed that facility were repaired in 2017 at a cost of $35,000 to the city. What we've found now over the last nine months is that now that we've got all the flow going to the correct facility and the correct volume, is that the lines that take the excess flow back to the creek have become compromised. They either needed to be cleaned out or they need to be repaired. That's what we've spent the last nine months doing, so I think it's important for us all to be on using the same language. There's the wetland bank that's managed by Land and Water Resources, and then there's the Prairie Green natural area, which is managed by the city. And it's the drain tiles that are now taking that excess flow to the south is what needs to be repaired. That's what we found over the last nine months.
So the damaged tile now are really in Prairie Green or in the area managed by Land and Water Resources?
No. Land and Water Resources manages the wetlands bank.
Okay.
The city manages Prairie Green. The drain tiles are both within untillable acreage as well as some areas where there is tillable acreage. What we've found is that because the discharge lines could not take the flow in the proper capacity or in the design capacity, I guess is probably the more accurate way of putting it, that did not allow the drain tiles that basically fed the wetlands bank to drain adequately because everything basically was backed up, going all the way back up to our borders. So our focus right now, over the last nine months, has been surveying and identifying what areas have been compromised, and some of them have just been filled with debris. Some of them have been filled with tree roots, and some of them have been partially collapsed over time. These are clay tiles, for example. In 2017, the city took out over 2,100 linear feet of clay tiles and replaced them with perforated PVC. Basically, we modernized the drain tiles. That's what we're encountering right now, too, is it's the discharge lines that were made out of clay drain tiles, they fail. They're clay, they break, so now we've got to get those fixed.
Okay. The problem was identified in June, so why is it that we're waiting? In other words, at least as it relates to the tillable, the 245 acres, whatever tile needs to be replaced as we prepare for the next planting season this spring, why are we delaying those repairs until the spring when we had really all last summer and all last fall to repair those tiles and make those acres functional?
Well, again, it's been a nine-month investigation. Where this process started is Land and Water Resources, who managed the wetland bank, contacted the city because they were getting too much water, and we contacted Huddlestone. They identified that, and they contacted us, I think it was the 15th or 16th of June. I'd have to look at what the email was. Then I contacted Tom Huddlestone of Huddlestone McBride on or about the 29th of June, and he started the investigation. And a lot of this was a combination of waiting for the fields to dry out so we could get into them, because where the 15-inch drain tile is, is basically it's a low channel that runs from the wetland bank south to the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. And the two times that I tried to walk that area last year with Tom Huddlestone, you'd walk maybe 100 feet, and you'd get ankle-deep and knee-deep in mud. You couldn't move any further. So we had to let that ground dry out so we could even get in there and start looking at it. And it has been over the last nine months, when conditions would allow, because as soon as it would dry out enough so you could get access to the area, it would then rain again, and then it would turn back into inaccessible. These are not, these drain tiles are not near paved roads or paved paths. They are literally, when we say we're walking into weeds, literally, you're there, you're walking into weeds.
So if we have another wet spring, then it's possible that we may not get those repaired until summer or fall?
Well, we're coming up to that window of opportunity again now, between the snow melt, which thankfully has been cooperating with us, and before the spring's rain come through, that Huddlestone McBride is comfortable that, at the schedule that we're on, that we get approval to get them in in March, they can have that area up and repaired fairly rapidly.
What do they project as far as the cost and how long...
I don't think that's appropriate to answer that question at this time. We're still actively reviewing their proposal.
So it could be $25,000, or it could be $75,000?
I'm not even going to guess.
You said we spent $35,000 last year?
2017.
Twenty, two years ago, we spent...
Correct.
Okay. So I'm just saying, though, that we could have a huge expenditure there. The potential's there that we may have to make a sizable investment, and you don't have to answer that. I guess my other question, and I didn't get an answer, was, did the Pitsticks get any type of benefit from the lease agreement? And the reason I say that is, there were a lot of programs out there last year as related to farmland, and I'm just saying that essentially, we gave 200 acres of leased property, and if they generated revenue from it, and we didn't get any benefit from it, my question is whether that's fair or not, and I was, you know, the response I received was that that was an appropriate question because it wasn't in the contract. You know, I think it would have been good to at least ask that question, because our federal government spent billions of dollars last year in subsidies, somewhere between $60 to $80 an acre, to deal with both the wet conditions that we had and the fact that there were a lot of acres in Illinois that were not tillable. And the other factor was, is that because of the tariffs, there were also federal programs that subsidized this type of farmland. So I'm just saying that, you know, we generated $17,000 of revenue. Four years ago, we generated $91,000 worth of revenue. You know, I'm just saying that they're, we're losing revenue there, and I'm just saying, you know, maybe there might be a better use of that land through various federal programs that are in place that we could at least explore and see if there's an opportunity to go with the CRP program or the SAFE program that the federal government provides. CRP would be the Conservation Reserve Program. S- SAFE would be the State Acres for Wildlife Enhancement Initiative. And there are farmers across Illinois that are benefiting from these programs, our environment's benefiting from these programs. And here we have Prairie Green, that's a reserve, and then we have heavy equipment, we're farming, we're using chemicals and herbicides in an area that is supposed to be a reserve. And, you know, I'm just saying, I think that there's other paths that we might be interested or should be interested in pursuing. We talk about green, and we talk about the carbon footprint. You know, these types of programs promote carbon equestration, and I think it's something that we should explore. That's another reason I think we should explore it, and why give a two-year lease when we can explore it and see if, as a community, we might want to go in a different direction with these 245 acres. The other point would be, as far as the contract itself, I mean, there's a blueprint lease agreement out there for farmland, and I guess I'm wondering if, in fact, we're asking for general liability insurance of $1 million. Is that per person or per... I think it's per occurrence. I think it should be both. It should be per person and per occurrence. And as far as property damage, I think they should have $1 million worth of coverage based on the state's suggested lease agreement that's out there through our Illinois Department of Agriculture. And as far as workman's compensation, there should be a full statute, it should be addressed full statutory limits as it relates to workman's comp. So I'm just saying, I think our contract is insufficient compared to what other lease, other farmlands being leased at across the state of Illinois. And, you know, I raised some questions about this previously, and, you know, as I did more research. The other thing is, is that we've got heavy equipment coming into an area where we have a lot of heavy traffic, and we've got heavy equipment to manage, to farm these 245 acres. Are we doing the residents that have to deal with getting around heavy equipment, tractors, tillage equipment? You know, are we doing them any favors by the City of Geneva renting this farmland? And, you know, this is a decision of the city council, and I guess I'm here tonight just to say that I think that we should step back and take another look at this and see if, in fact, it might be better to idle those acres in the CRP program, explore it with the state of Illinois, see if it qualifies. The other thing is, is that, I mean, this would be green. I mean, we talk about what can Geneva do that's green, well, this would certainly be a step in the right direction. We talk about our coyote issues on the western end of the community. If we'd convert that to CRP acres, what we'd do is we'd bring in more wildlife, there'd be a source of food that would keep those coyotes probably a little bit more at bay. We'd have quail, we'd have pheasant, you know. I think that there'd be a lot of benefits to taking a different approach, and I won't take a lot more time tonight to talk about it, but I think these are things that we should look at, and especially when we're getting diminishing revenue from the land, and, you know, maybe this is a good time to explore going in a different direction. Thank you.
Thank you.
Actually, I'm going to vote against this two-year contract, and I'm going to suggest that we only renew it for one year with the additional insurance coverage that I propose that really is the direction given by the Department of Agriculture here in the state of Illinois, at least their template as it relates to entering into a land contract. Thank you.
Anyone else? We have a motion, I believe, by Marks, seconded by Clemmons. Mr. City Clerk?
I would move to amend the contract.
I didn't recognize you. You can't make a motion without being fully recognized. I've already recited the motion and the second for a floor. I'll defer to the city attorney whether they can...
You can do it if you want, you don't have to.
Mr. Clerk, take the roll.
Maladra.
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
McGowan?
Nay.
Swanson?
Aye.
Bruno?
Aye.
Burkhart?
Nay.
Clemmons?
Aye.
Ruby?
Nay.
Caven?
Nay.
Kilburg?
Nay.
Tye?
Tye.
Let me say something first. Everything Alderman Kilburg has said is obviously very well researched, but I would make this statement. To change course requires, as Alderman Kilburg indicated, a policy discussion. If we are to change course after doing something for 16 years, then we should have a policy discussion on whether or not we want to change course in doing something different. I also would say this, that we should not look at the success of the program simply by the revenue generated, because if we do nothing with 246 acres, in terms of a lease, the revenue is zero. I think it's respectfully extraordinarily unfair to Mr. Pitstick and his family, who have for well over a decade and a half worked with us in good faith to farm the land that nobody else wants to farm. If we wanted to return that farmland to its original glory, we should have discussed that in terms of the overall strategic plan of the Prairie Green Preserve. We haven't. If that's a discussion for future dates, that's great, we could have that discussion. But for now, to pull the rug out from under the Pitsticks, and quite frankly, to change course on a dime, I think is inappropriate. I vote yes.
Can I comment?
The motion passes with six affirmative votes, five nay votes.
Mayor, can I comment?
Yes.
Mayor, I think to say that we wouldn't be able to generate revenue from the properties incorrect, because if we were to enter into a CRP program or a SAFE program, we would have revenue that'd be coming from the federal government, from the United States Department of Agriculture with both programs.
But both programs require...
So to say that we wouldn't be able to generate revenue if we idle the 240 acres is incorrect.
That program requires significant research and investigation by staff, number one. Number two, we also know that to qualify for those programs is no sure thing. We know that. Number three, I don't know how, at the 11th hour, again, for 16 consecutive years, we say to the one bidder, "It's been a slice, but no more, we're changing direction," without first having a policy discussion. If after that policy discussion, this council chooses to no longer go in that direction, we could do so.
That's why I suggested we go with one-year lease rather than a two-year commitment, because that would give the council and the opportunity to discuss it and decide if we might want to go in a different direction. Plus, we could do the research to see if the CRP program or the SAFE program would be available to the City of Geneva, which I believe it would be.
The Department of Agriculture, you talked a little bit about green initiatives and what have you. The Department of Agriculture does not have, respectfully, a great track record in terms of preserving land and/or using that land for the benefit of the greater good to some extent, as I'm sure you would probably agree. There's also an assertion made that farming also introduces chemicals almost by right. I don't know. I don't know if you know as well, depending on what's being grown, what sort of chemicals are being used, but to assume that on a 246 acres west of town, we have, you know, something akin to Agent Orange being sprayed out there is frightening. Yet, we also have in the next sentence that, is it not an inconvenience to our residents that perhaps heavy equipment's being brought in? You know, some of the most fondest memories many of us probably have is the glory days when we actually saw farm equipment cruising up and down the roads. So in some respects, the farming operation out there is an educational tool to our schoolchildren and others who perhaps miss those days. And I know for a fact that the Pitstick family provides those educational opportunities to our community if they so choose. So I just think it's disingenuous to stop on a dime without the full discussion. And I think a two-year lease is wise, because we do have, in our Department of Public Works and elsewhere, where we purchase commodities, we have multiple-year contracts on those commodities to prevent, which was never discussed, the downside of doing a one-year contract. If a one-year contract is good this year, and next year it shows to be a dismal situation, then what? At least we're locked in. That's my position. The motion passes? Motion to adjourn the meetings in order? Oh, we have one more, forgive me. Sorry. Everyone's a critic. G, recommend draft resolution authorizing the execution of extension of the Fisher Farms Special Service Area Number 16 management agreement with Real Manage LLC for 2020 and 2021 and 2022 at a cost not to exceed $11,700 per year, and Mutz Landscaping Incorporated for 2020, 2021, and 2022 landscape maintenance service at a cost not to exceed $53,800. Is there a motion? Motion by McGowan?
Second.
Seconded by Bruno.
So Real Manage LLC was formerly known as the Baum Property Management, Inc., has provided day-to-day Fisher Farms SSA administration services on behalf of the city, as well as administrative services for the Fisher Farms Master Association since 2005. Mutz Landscaping or Landscape, Inc., has provided Fisher Farms SSA with landscape maintenance services since 2006. Both firms have a detailed understanding of the 60 acres comprising SSA Number 16 and the maintenance activities required. The purchase price for Mutz services remains the same for all three years, which are unchanged since 2010. The proposed price for the Real Management Services have an increase of $708 per year from the previous contract, totaling an additional $2,124 over the three-year contract. The Fisher Farms Master Association Board supports the extension of this agreement for both these firms. And again, I have Director DeGroot here to answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Ms. Dawkins or Mr. DeGroot? And again, this recommendation comes from the HOA, in essence, and we simply serve as the facilitator of that agreement. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Item 4G passes unanimously. Now, forgive me for jumping ahead, we're at the adjournment point. Motion to adjourn would be in order?
Move to adjourn.
Alderman Bruno makes the motion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned, folks.